Somebody may already have those, or they were from last fall, but I thought I'd at least distribute those. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to come in and talk to the mayor and the city council. We, I represent the, I'm president of the Wabashaw Callagary Community Foundation, and we've been pretty active, and a lot of the reason that we've been successful is the city and the community has really supported us a lot. So I thought I'd just take a few minutes and just kind of tell you what's, what's happening with our organization, and, and exactly what we're doing. So, one of the things we just did was we updated our mission statement, and I thought I'd mention that. The, our new mission statement is the Wabashaw Callagary Community Foundation serves a greater Wabashaw Callagary by connecting people with charitable intent to our communities, keeping them a great place to live, work, and play. And that's something that we really work hard on abiding by. We do a lot of different things. We, we're involved in a lot of programs and a lot of different organizations in town. Some of the things we're going on right now is we're just finishing up our Free Pool Pass fundraiser. We've worked with the city, the city's been very good at working with us, and, and the generosity of the community has made this program very successful. And the youth appear to really appreciate this program because, as you've seen, the pool of the last few years have been just full. It's just a great, great place for the kids to come and hang out and, and learn to swim, and, and be, being on the river, it's, it's nice to have those people, those kids comfortable with the water, and so that's been a very good program for us. We're also just beginning our local giving campaign, which is where our fundraiser for several different local organizations, service organizations, we do, that'll be, the donation forums will be going out May 22nd. In the last couple of years, we've raised over $40,000 for these organizations, and it allows these organizations to do things above and beyond what their, what their budgets, budgets for. And so it's, it's kind of a great way for our, for them to help our neighbors, friends and neighbors. And the community has been, again, very, very generous with that program and allowed us to provide these service organizations with money. We've worked with the city, as you're probably well aware, a local tree garden. We, that was started a year or so ago, and that's a program that, with the ash trees disappearing by cutting them down, we're hoping to expand that program a little bit with the city to provide more trees to replace those. And we've, that's a relationship with the city that has worked out very well. New this year, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're trying to help Riverboat Days. It's in the plans right now to provide a donkey baseball game during Riverboat Days, which would be a lot of fun, and not necessarily a fundraiser for us, but just something to expand Riverboat Days and make it more entertaining for everybody. That's kind of in the works, I think it's going to happen, but we're still working on the, the final stuff of that one. In August, we have our ice cream social, and that's where we give away ice cream to everybody that comes along. That's usually under the bridge in August, just before school starts. It's a time that we actually give out the checks for our local giving campaign to all the people there. We honor our donors and it's just have a good time. We have an ice cream eating contest and several other festivities that make it a fun time. So it's just a way for us to recognize the community that's been so generous to us and keeps us going. In October, we offer a class for wills and estate planning. We found that as we interviewed and talked to a lot of people, there is, there is so many people that do not have a will or an estate plan, and it becomes very important if I talk to some lawyers that kind of tell us that, you know, a lot of times that their properties and, and things that are supposed to go to the kids or whatever, sometimes get rearranged through, through different laws and things. So it's a good, for everybody to have a will and estate plan, and we do that through community ed. So if anybody's interested, it's, I've seen it three different times, and every time I see it, it's been a, it's been, I've learned several things from it. So that's through community ed, and that'll be in the fall, so you can look for that in their, in their brochure. This fall also, we do our annual fundraiser, that's for our fund drive, so we can get money to provide for the community for whatever they may need. We do support a lot of programs, we do enhance a lot, we work with a lot of different organizations in town to enhance the programs they have. And so this fundraiser becomes very important to us so we can provide funds and help these different organizations out as well as what we normally do. If you check, I won't list them all because it would take me a while, but if you check the brochures, there's a list of a lot of the things that we've done that was printed last fall. We've done several things since then, but it just kind of gives you an idea of what, what our organization does to help the community. And another, another thing is our foundation is very unique in that we have the flexibility to kind of help whatever the community needs. We have funds set aside that every year, whatever the community might need, we usually have the flexibility to help them. So that's been a real plus for our organization. And the other, I guess the last thing I should mention is that our organization is all volunteer. I mean, the board, everything we do is on a volunteer basis. And we, our parent company is Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation headed by Tim Penny. They've been very generous to us as well, and they do all our bookwork and handle all our money, so we don't have to deal with that. And they do all our taxes and all that, and they match a lot of our funds. So any, 100% of the donations that come into our organization goes right back out to the community. There's nothing taken out for, for paperwork or bookwork or anything. And that's just kind of a nice thing to know, that if you donate to our organization, that is, goes right back to the community. So we, we always encourage donations, and we take donations of land, stocks, we've had several stock donations. People taking advantage of different tax situations in that regard. So, so if anybody is interested, besides our fundraiser, we take donations all year long. So, but we do appreciate the city's help, we've worked well with the, the city, and we hope to continue that relationship. And the community is, like I said, has been awesome to us, so we really appreciate that as well. So, thank you very much, I'll let you go, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
I was just blocking the sun for my eyes.
Oh, oh, I thought you were raising your hand, I felt like a teacher up here. Any questions at all?
How do you get this, how do you decide who gets help from you?
We take grants, I mean, people request grants. So we take, twice a year, we sit down with any of the grants that have been requested in April and in September, and we award grants. We just awarded one to the, to the decorating committee for Christmas decorations. They got, in our last thing, we donated that, we've helped St. Felix's with their playground. That was one of our latest ones. And I know we set aside money to work with the city on the tree garden. So it's usually grants that are requested. If one of our board members see a need, they'll also explore that, and we can actually do it that way. But yeah, if there's organizations out there or something that this, somebody says, "Boy, the city could use this", they just have to come to our board meeting, make a presentation, and, and, like I say, twice a year, we award grants. So, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the update, it's great to hear from you, and for everyone here to be able to hear the good work that the Community Foundation is supporting. Obviously with the list in, in the brochure, lots of us in this room are involved in organizations that are receiving that support, so it's really wonderful, thank you. Our next speaker is Nikki Tom and Tammy Feeder. Tammy's with Wabashaw County Public Health, and they're going to talk about Tobacco 21. Welcome Nikki.
Yeah, my name's Nikki Tom, I'm a medical student at the University of Minnesota, and I'm currently living in Lake City as part of my school's Rural Physician Associate Program. And thank you for the opportunity to be here today to speak to you all about a really important topic that I think has the potential to have a significant positive impact on the health of, of the community here in Wabashaw, and that is increasing the tobacco sales age to 21. When I first, I first became interested in this topic through my own experiences working in healthcare, seeing firsthand how many people are suffering from medical problems related to tobacco use. And as soon as I learned about Tobacco 21, I knew it was something that I wanted to be an advocate for. So earlier this year, I started collaborating with the Wabashaw County Public Health Department to spread information across the county about what I believe is a life-saving public health policy. So tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable disease and death in the United States. It's a significant problem here in Minnesota as well, with over 6,000 tobacco-related deaths per year, and over $3.2 billion in excess medical costs related to tobacco use per year. Locally, 15.1% of adults in Wabashaw County are currently smoking. In 2017, there were 120 smoking-related deaths, which was 15.7% of all deaths that year. And the total cost of smoking-related medical care in 2017 was just under $15 million. So these numbers show that tobacco use is a problem here in Wabashaw County. Even more concerning is that in 2017, the rate of tobacco use among young people actually increased for the first time since the year 2000 after years of declining. 26.4% of Minnesota high school students are currently using tobacco products, and nearly 40% have tried at least once. Tobacco use is unfortunately on the rise, especially among our young people who are being aggressively targeted with marketing through social media, candy flavorings of their products, and exposure to these products in their own schools. According to a 2017 Minnesota Department of Health, Health Advisory, on nicotine, teenagers are especially susceptible to nicotine addiction, as well as the harmful effects of nicotine on the developing brain. The Surgeon General and the FDA have declared the dramatic increase in e-cigarette use among teenagers to be an epidemic. This is a big problem that unfortunately affects us even here in Wabashaw. Raising the tobacco sales age to 21 will decrease accessibility of tobacco products to young people, not only the 18 to 21 age group, but also those under 18, who primarily get their tobacco products from their legal age peers who are 18 to 20 years old. Tobacco 21 also has the potential to reduce the number of adults who are smoking over time because the vast majority of adult smokers started before the age of 21, about 95% of them. So raising the tobacco sales age by only a few years will significantly reduce the number of people who ever even begin smoking. A 2015 Institute of Medicine report estimated that with raising the tobacco sales age of 21, there would be a 25% reduction in the smoking initiation rates among the 15 to 17-year-old age group. And a 2017 Minnesota Medicine article estimated that raising the tobacco sales age to 21 would prevent 3,355 young people from starting to smoke statewide in the first year. In over a 15-year period, this number would increase to over 30,000 Minnesotans who would never start smoking as a result of Tobacco 21. These estimates are very impressive, but there are many communities who've already implemented Tobacco 21 and documented the positive impact that it's had on their communities. This includes 12 states and over 30 communities here in Minnesota. For example, in Chicago, reported rates of tobacco use by young people ages 18 to 20 decreased by 36% one year after initiation of Tobacco 21. In Nida, Massachusetts, there was a 48% decrease in smoking rates among high school students as a result of Tobacco 21. Therefore, Tobacco 21 is not only estimated to have a significant impact, but it's actually been shown to be effective in practice as well. The two most common concerns I've heard about Tobacco 21 are about the economic effects on local businesses, and the idea that 18 to 20-year-olds are adults who should have the right to make their own decision about whether to purchase tobacco products. Regarding the economic effects, tobacco purchases by 18 to 20-year-olds make up only 2% to 4% of total tobacco sales. Eliminating these sales is unlikely to have a significant negative impact on local businesses. Furthermore, there are serious health consequences associated with our current tobacco laws, as I've already mentioned. The CDC estimates that 102,000 Minnesotans who are currently under the age of 18 are projected to die prematurely from smoking. A small loss of sales from tobacco products is a small price to pay for a life-saving policy. Finally, although 18 to 20-year-olds are adults who have the right to make their own decisions, the current tobacco epidemic is also significantly harming those under the age of 18 who are being taken advantage of by companies that are specifically targeting them with these dangerous products. Our current laws, tobacco laws have led to children and teenagers being exposed to these products in their own schools and are not doing enough to protect them. Therefore, Tobacco 21 is important to protect all young people, but especially those under the age of 18 who are being targeted by tobacco companies and who have access to tobacco products through their legal age peers. In conclusion, I believe that Tobacco 21 has the potential to improve the health of the Wabashaw community. There's strong evidence to support this. Tobacco 21 also has strong support from the public with a recent national survey showing that 75% of adults support Tobacco 21, and this includes 70% of current smokers. I hope you all will consider raising the tobacco sales age to 21 in Wabashaw. I'd also like to introduce Tammy Feeder, the Director of Public Health for Wabashaw County. Thank you.
Thanks Nikki.
Thank you for having us tonight. Nikki filled you in on all the facts and the data. I'm here to show you how easy it is to target our kids. You know, the smaller the gadget, the bigger the problem is kind of my motto. This is called a Juul, I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, Officer Stark certainly is. This is an electronic cigarette, looks like a flash drive. It slides into the side of a computer to charge. So parents are often getting fooled by their kids and big tobacco companies. What fills or what you use this is, is a pod, it's called a Juul Pod. This one smells like mango, this has as much nicotine in it as two packs of cigarettes. So they, they, you were the kids in, as Nikki said, with fruit flavors, Sour Patch Kids, Creme Brulee, Reddymeth, things like that, that don't taste like icky cigarettes, they taste, they're appealing to kids. The newest one that we just purchased is called a Sorin Drop. Kids refer to it as vaping. But this is how this looks, it charges with a USB port, but when you have it together, this is where the liquid goes. It looks like the highlighters that I used to buy my kids before school started, one was pink and one was yellow and one was blue. So again, sneaky, very easy to hide, because they let off very few vapors. Kids can go like this and cough a little bit, and teachers have no clue that this is what they're doing in class when they turn around and run on the board. Wabashaw County recently updated their ordinance to include electronic cigarettes. I'm not sure what the city of Wabashaw's ordinance says, but I would encourage you to look at that at the very least, to include these electronic devices and other nicotine delivery systems that are being targeted for our kids to use. And if you're interested in exploring a Tobacco 21 ordinance, I'm here to be technical assistance to you. You can call me and send me research, hook you up with my contacts at the Public Health Law Center for the wording and, and current recommendations by the state. I'm happy to answer any questions or to help you with anything that you might need. I did speak with a school resource officer, who does indicate that yes, it is definitely a problem here in Wabashaw. So I would recommend looking strongly at your ordinance. Whoops. Any questions?
Amy, what's the closest city around her that has this ordinance?
So, Olmsted County just passed it, it's probably the closest one.
Olmsted County?
Now, Wabashaw County affects Mizepa because they don't have a city ordinance. So when we passed ours in October, I want to say, the city of Mizepa was affected. But the city of Wabashaw, the city of Lake City, the city of Plainview was not by our ordinance, because they have their own. So we've just been going to the city, I'm sure that the county did this, encourage you to do the same or take a look at it, and let us know if you have any questions.
I'd definitely be interested in seeing that ordinance.
Okay. Yeah?
Because I know this is a problem.
Yeah.
I see it all, every day, so.
Yeah, perfect. I'll send you, I'll send it maybe to Chad, and I can get you also the current, you know, the current language, but then also some research articles that go along with it really nicely to help support the reason, so.
Very good, thank you.
Super. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks so much, thank you Nikki for all the facts, it's a lot to digest, but I just, I work in tobacco research, and this other tobacco issue has been percolating for a long time, and not only is it potentiating kids for further cigarette use, which is documented, it's just further, as a, as a broad issue, it's potentiating them for all addiction. And that, that is a really tough thing about, about teenage brains and addictive substances, is that while it might seem harmless, and you know, the idea is that, you know, kids experiment and kids try things, and eventually they quit. Many of them don't quit, they become lifetime tobacco users, but their brain is forever potentiated. And I thought that was interesting, that the number, percent of, of current smokers that, that support Tobacco 21, 70%, which is obviously very high, is the same as the percent of tobacco, current tobacco users that wish they could quit. So, that, I just, that's an interesting fact that I, that I wasn't aware of, that kind of resonates with me. So, any other questions related to the Tobacco 21? We'll look forward to that ordinance information, appreciate it. There's tons of information online if anybody's curious to further learn about the issue. Thank you. We have time for public comment, anyone who likes to, would like to approach council, just state your name and your address and, and share with us any thoughts you have. All right, we haven't had public comment in a while, I'm feeling kind of, I'm feeling a miss in it a little bit. Any changes or additions to the agenda? We do have something removed from the agenda, right?
Yeah, a couple of things we want to add, what you have in front of you is for Arjack, a liquor license. A second one, yeah, we want to add this as item 8.7 under the consent. And then we'd also like to remove item 10.5, which is the resolution for code violation of nuisance property, R27 dot 00548 dot 00. And the reason for that is the property has been cleaned up. And we are, Chief Stark drove by that property this morning and was, felt that the cleanup was satisfactory to, to warrant removing this item, so.
Okay. So I hope I have the correct printed version, just correct me if I get numbers wrong here, because I don't have an 8.7.
We're adding it.
On consent, oh, this is 7.
8.7 we're adding is the River, Arjack, that it's not on there at all.
Okay, I just misheard you, yep, okay.
The one that's on there is for St. Felix's.
Got it. Right, that's why I was confused, I think, okay. All right, any other changes or additions from council? Okay. We have had a very busy month, everybody, I think everybody is busy with celebrations. School's very busy, it's been a beautiful month for prom, the musical was a huge success. Spring sports are in full, you know, fully in fledge, I think there are 10 days of school left, if that's possible. I don't know where spring went, I think we, we had a rough winter and woke up and it's, and it's over, is I think what happened there. Several of us, including myself and Chad and Tony and Gene, were invited to participate in the community worker event, that's the second grade hosts at WK, which is wonderful, there were a lot of community members there representing their, their service professions. Just a super event. The Main Street program, for those of you who are keeping track of that project, and Craig might want to jump in, celebrated with their annual meeting last night at the library, but they also had a very successful Artists on Main Street workshop, which was very well-attended, and I think that will yield some good applications. Those are proposals which will steward some funds that were granted by, through the Main Street program. They're going to be provided technical assistance by Springboard, which is an arts organization based in the Twin Cities. So the staff from Springboard facilitated that workshop, I thought it was very well-conducted. Coming out of the Greater Minnesota Futures, there's a Birds, there's an interest in whether Wabashaw would wish to become a Bird City. For those who spend some time in Wisconsin, you're probably more familiar, they have highway signs designating Bird City communities. That's a well-established program in Wisconsin, it's less well-established in Minnesota, but they're growing the program. And so again, a very nicely attended event was held, Nancy Falcom hosted that, and Audubon staff presented that Bird City model as something for those who are interested to, to consider. Obviously it has an impact on natural resources, but also has an economic impact that is documented by their program. So very exciting. Just with, we had a core meeting, which was very productive, I'm sure Chad's going to speak to that. The core returned to, to discuss the proposal that was submitted by the city in 2018, and they're open to that proposal as well as any, any further consideration and ideas, any creative thinking that can be utilized to address the dredge material management issue, that was very productive. The Wabashaw Riverfront Revitalization Team, we'll say, involves both council members, city staff, and National Eagle Center Board members and staff. And that, first meeting of that group will be May 9th. They'll meet again June 20th and August 1st. And this group is going to convene to, to steer the, the pre-design process and also further that pre-design into the actual planning of the expansion and riverfront revitalization activities. So the first agenda includes the work to date, existing conditions review, overview, and site, site in public areas, and dockage. So I'm sure that'll be very exciting, we'll be excited to hear updates. Members of that group include Tony Johnson, Brian Malm, Chad Springer, Brian Woodley, Jeff Sulla, Dave Woodley, John Friedmeyer, from our planning, from the Facility Planning Committee of the National Eagle Center, Randy Egenberger, Victoria Moore, both of whom are board members, NEC staff, Eileen Hansen, Rolf Thompson, and the Milestone Consulting Agency, as well as, as LHB, which is the architect which is selected for the project, and JE Dunn, which is the general contractor. So that will be wonderful, we expect good work from that group. And I just wanted to say thank you to Jim Abbott, who's been an ambulance commission member. He submitted his resignation, we have an ambulance commission opening, we have a planning commission opening. So I urge those who would consider serving on those commissions to submit an application, that's a simple application to complete, you can just pick it up at City Hall. And that is all from me. Committee reports, I'm just gonna, I guess I'll just start on this end. I'm trying to think if I have any other updates, no. Okay, so Tim, from planning.
Planning did not meet last month, we'll meet next on May 14th.
All right, and Brian?
Water met yesterday, ah, water, utilities yet met yesterday, nothing of note.
Okay, and Tony, do you have anything you want to report from Parks Commission?
Evening everyone, Street Commission did not meet, and the Parks, Park Board, we went over the John Deere Moore replacement, and the options there, and we went through the pool boiler replacement, and then I gave them an update on the splash pad and some pool maintenance. And really on the splash pad is, equipment's coming next week. And then our guys are burying the water service and the discharge line and tank and all that good stuff before they get here. And then the pool, we got to do some minor maintenance to the inside, repair some inner lining, and then paint the entire pool. So, like you said, school's almost done, time is flying, so.
The first time I saw you out there, it seemed like it was deep winter, but it happens fast. I don't want to put you on the spot, Linda, do you want to update anything from the HPC, anything of, of note? Sorry, and I can, I can say a couple of things about that. Okay, I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that if, if people didn't notice it, it's, it's top of mind because it's, it's coming up again, they're publicizing it again, but last year, Wabashaw's Heritage Preservation Commission nominated the Gambles Building as, for Minnesota Preservation Award from the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota, and it was, it was not only awarded that, it was very excited, they were excited to receive a rural application. A lot of those applications go to metro projects because they're, it's in the best interest of the contractors and the architects that work on those preservation projects to get awards, and so frankly, that's how they do it. They submit their own projects, and they're, and they're well, you know, appropriately, they're, they're awarded when they do good work. But they were very pleased to get an application from a community the size of Wabashaw. And that particular award was recognizing perpetual investment, basically, in a, in a family business, in a building that belongs to a family business. You know, a lot of the projects that we see and that get sort of front-page attention are redevelopment projects, things like, you know, breweries turned into apartments and that kind of thing. But that was very appreciated, and so if anyone ever has a preservation project that they believe warrants an award or recognition, please bring that to the HPC. I, I know it'd be well-received by that group, and, and they can think about nominating further work that's done in the community. That's all I was going to say.
Should I check into the microphone?
Sure.
Linda Mann, and I'm chairperson of the Wabashaw County, I mean, the City of Wabashaw Heritage Preservation Commission. And this, at this last meeting, we did discuss nominating the Wabashaw Dentistry Building for an award because of the restoration you did and using the tax credits and everything. Or, so that, that is something new that you did, I mean, you just didn't mention it, I just wanted to bring that up, that we will be nominating for this year's Preservation Alliance Awards.
Yep.
So I think that is probably the newest thing that we've been, and we, I have gotten, Wabashaw's gotten a lot of press, even from the award given to the Gambles Building, which is really wonderful, it was a very simple project, but it touched everyone's heart, I think, and it's just showed there are so many fabulous projects that were done throughout the state, and they chose the Gambles Building, which was like very simple, but they did it incrementally through the years, the Gambles family did. And they really appreciated this and wanted to give an example to other businesses in the state and building owners that could, could do the same thing.
Yeah.
So I encourage you to nominate also. I think that was it Emily, wasn't it?
All right, sounds good, yeah, I, I'm so pleased that, that we came up with that, that I was on the All right, sounds good. Yeah, I, I'm so pleased that, that we came up with that, that I was on the commission when we made that nomination, because it really, to me, it's emblematic of the investment that many business owners put into their buildings over time. They really have to, and they do, they don't have to, they do. So that, that one came up because it had come as application to our commission last year, and they had replaced the full front glass front. And so that was on our, it was on our minds. But May is Preservation Month. Happy Preservation Month. And thank you to everyone who invests significantly in our, in our commercial district, which is nationally recognized. Appreciate that.
You know what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I missing anybody? Did I miss anybody? No. All right. Well, have the administrators report from. He did.
Yeah, I said there was nothing.
Okay.
Aside from an agenda item. Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a further agenda item related to utilities.
Yeah, we'll talk about it when we get there.
I can update on the port in John's absence. Not a whole lot of business, but we did refinance an existing loan with the downtown business for some roof repair. So that's moving forward. We have progressed in our legal actions on the property out in the industrial court with JPN Ventures. Lot of work going on there, as there's some other issues with the primary mortgage holder that we're dealing with as well. So, and then we continued our discussion on the Second Street Properties and, you know, going forward with some downtown economic plans involving perhaps CETA. So as far as other things, we've had several meetings now, myself, Tony, and Pat, along with Brian, on the wellhead protection. Our original plan is due for a refresh, but we're also including the new well here. So we have wells on the west side and the well here, right at City Hall. So it's a lot more expansive of a, of a wellhead protection plan. Brian and I also met with Mike Bobbani, who we've got penciled in for the July meeting to bring the results of the refresh of that capital improvement plan process that he did. He's just been, he's double booked on these nights, so he's unable to make it until then. But we went through the two thousand thirteen street project, went through the bids now that they have been received and opened, and ironed out the funds, which we will get into, into more depth as we go along. We submitted the code codification first draft to the company that we went with at the end of last year. So once we get that back, we're going to have a process in place to look at all of these ordinances, couple a month probably, with staff to redo them. There'll be a checkout process, and this, this, that's what this company will do for us. We'll help manage the document flow back and forth. So we're most likely will have the personnel policy to you for the June agenda. I'm hoping to have a personnel policy in the middle of the month, our personnel subcommittee meeting in the middle of the month to go through that prior to the council meeting. Now for the core meeting, I'll just read a couple of key updates that were noted, and these notes were agreed upon between both the city and the core. So, and one of the, we have three or four actually key takeaways from the meeting. And the first is probably what we felt was the most important and something that we were very happy with the outcome of that meeting, and that was, the Southside Fitzgerald and the Drysdale sites will not be included as recommended alternatives in, in the base plan for the next iteration of the DMMP, regardless of whether we have a Section two seventeen agreement or not. So if we don't reach a Section two seventeen agreement with the core, the Drysdale Farm and the Southside Fitzgerald site is off the table with the core officially. We had Colonel Cawkins say it at a meeting, but we also wanted to get that.
Reaffirmed.
Reaffirmed and in writing with the core going forward here. So that's, that we felt was a huge win. And there was a press release that I think a lot of you saw as a result of that meeting, and that was a joint press release working with the core. Several versions went back and forth. So it, I'd reiterate what Emily said is, is, a lot of things are on the table yet, and they certainly seem to be in a working mood with us, and, and we'll move forward that way. Another key takeaway is the core does have significant flexibility to work on the parameters of a Section two seventeen. And just a reminder, the city did submit our version of a Section two seventeen, which includes the port on the west side and running sand through that. The key drivers are the economics and assurance that the city and port authority will have adequate capacity and disposal facilities to accommodate the core placement needs. A Section two seventeen agreement will need to be approved and authorized up the core chain of command. And really, at a very high level, there's two pathways to moving forward. One is obviously negotiation and finalization of a two seventeen. And the second one is no two seventeen, AKA business as usual, which would likely entail the core working directly with Conor to discuss operational details related to the DQ and what is called the file sticker site now, which was in the plan highlighted as the high school site, which is this farm that the Conors own out here past, just past the high school about across from our wastewater treatment plant. So.
Well, just to clarify, that the two seventeen agreement is the agreement that sets up the barge terminal.
Right.
So that everybody understands what that is.
And, and there could be another two seventeen that doesn't even involve the barge terminal if some other great plan comes forward that we, that we see. So that would be where that, and we're looking at getting back together here in early June. I'm waiting on a date, or some dates from the core, Craig, and then I'll get you and Emily and, and Brian and, and our team back queued up for that. So. That's good.
Thank you. All right, now we have our consent agenda. We have the approval of the April second, twenty nineteen Regular Council Minutes, and then we have also minutes from an April fifteenth Special Council Meeting. We have approval of the April seventeenth and twenty-fourth Board of Appeal and Equalization Minutes. We have a temporary on-sale liquor license application for St. Felix for their fall festival. We have a resolution of an assessment of unpaid utility charges, temporary on-sale liquor license application for River Junction's Arts Council, and the warrants. And then the second River Junction Arts Council liquor license approval.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Woodley, Councilman Woodley, and a second from Tim Wallerick. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Consent agenda passes, and we have a public hearing related to City Code Section five hundred, our water rate. Give us a little bit of details on that, Brian or Chad.
I can do that.
This was, we had a first reading on this at the last council meeting. This is the second reading and the ultimate adoption, if the council so chooses. What this entails is a five percent water rate increase, sewer not being touched. Just to give people an understanding of what that means, so for your zero to six thousand gallon users, currently it's two hundred, or, two dollars and sixty-six cents per thousand gallons used. That will be going to two dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand. The average user in the city of Wabashaw is three thousand gallons, so on the water side, and that's the only one affected, that would be an average of about thirty-nine cents a month increase in the bill. This was done through the Utilities Commission, based on information from Mr. Bobbani, and the refresh of our, our rate study from previous years. And that'll also come in that July meeting as well. But this has ultimately been recommended and forwarded by the Utilities Commission.
Correct. Any questions? All right, then we could entertain a motion to approve this amendment. Oh, oh, sorry. Yes, of course, yeah. So we, we can take public comment, too, at this time. This is the second public hearing for this utility water rate update. Any public comment?
So we'll open at seven thirty-seven.
All right. All right, we, further ask for anybody who has any, any questions or comment related to the water rate? Nobody looks too enthused to talk about water rates. We'll invite you one last time. Very good. Okay. It's, yeah, seven thirty-eight. We'll close that, that public hearing, and we can entertain from council a motion to approve this amendment of Section five hundred, Appendix A, to increase the water rates effective with the May twenty nineteen billing period.
I'll make motion.
Second.
We have a motion, I heard Jeff first. We have a motion from Dean, and we have a second from Jeff Sulla. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion passes. We also have a hearing related to the twenty nineteen street project assessment. We have Brian here to further inform us on the process, the process and progress to date.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So this is the assessment hearing for the twenty nineteen street improvement project. Notices were published in the newspaper, and individual notices were sent out to the properties on the final assessment role affected by the project. When you last saw the assessment role, it was in preliminary form. Since that time, we have taken bids on the project, and we have adjusted the assessment role to adjust them to the, to the low bids that were received for the project. The result of that was the assessments were slightly lowered from what you saw and what, what folks were presented in the preliminary assessment role. The assessment amount for an equivalent residential unit was reduced to one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. For comparison, the previous street improvement projects you did in two thousand fourteen and twenty sixteen, the two thousand fourteen assessment amount was twelve hundred and fifty dollars, and in twenty sixteen, it was thirteen hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So this is, again, right within the range of what you've assessed on projects of a similar type in years past. We did receive several questions from residents after sending out the individual notices to property owners, and we do have several recommendations for modifications to the assessment role, and I'd like to go through those with you. One of those, we would recommend removing from the assessment role is line item thirty from David and Marcia Meyer. The reason for this removal is that parcel, it is a tax parcel, but it is a, not a buildable parcel. So it would not be a residential buildable parcel. It's only thirty feet wide. So we would recommend removal of the assessment for the parcel identified on line thirty of the assessment role. Property address, eight twelve Ninth Street East. Couple of other modifications. One that was already made prior to us sending out the assessment role, on the last page, line item one hundred and seventy-two, this is, as I said, has already been removed from the assessment role that was included in your packet. For property owner, at least at the time, it was Jennifer Ender. That parcel no longer exists as a tax parcel. It was combined with another property. So there would be no parcel to assess for that one. So we removed it. The other two adjustments are actually a mistake that I made on the assessment role. Council had previously given us a recommendation or a direction to remove the cemetery properties from the assessment role. Those are line items one hundred and fifty and one hundred and fifty-two for St. Felix Church. And that was based on statute language that exempts nonprofit cemeteries from assessment. So those two, we would recommend removal from the assessment role as well. So those are the recommended modifications that if you choose to adopt the assessment role, we would recommend adopting the assessment role with those modifications. We also received, and I think you have in front of you, two written objections to the assessment role. One related to, what is line item fifty-two on the assessment role, which is Mark and Alice Jarstad, two oh one Dugan Avenue, which is a single equivalent residential unit assessment. And then one, line item sixty-two, Johnson and Schofield at six twenty-six Jefferson Avenue. So those were written objections that you received.
I'll read those during the public hearing.
You're, you're going to read them during the public hearing?
I'll read them during the public hearing.
Sure. That's the only comment I have on the assessment role. I'd be happy to answer any questions from council if you would like prior to opening the hearing.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
So we'll open the public hearing again on this topic. It looks like it's seven forty-four. It's hard to see that clock from here. Welcome any, anyone to this, to the podium.
I can read the first two that were received. Like Brian said, the one is from Mr. Jarstad, Mr. and Mrs. Jarstad. Please consider this letter as formal objection to the proposed assessment for the property owned by Mark A. Jarstad and Alice T. Jarstad at two oh one Dugan Avenue. The tax parcel number is the R two seven dot zero zero nine five six dot zero nine. The objection is based on the following. The property fronts Dugan Avenue and not River Drive. The amount of the proposed assessment cannot exceed the increase in market value as a result of the improvement. The value of our property will not increase by the amount of the proposed assessment. The city's assessment formula is not based on any type of market analysis as required by law, but is instead based on an arbitrary policy. Attached are the two pages from the League of Minnesota City that addresses those concerns. And the second one is from Johnson and Schofield. It's signed by the CEO, Marcus Johnson, and that is, to whom it may concern, per the letter we received regarding the assessment attached for the road project on six twenty-six Jefferson Avenue, I would like to formally object to the amount of the assessment. The amount of the assessment seems excessive for fifty feet of road frontage. Please contact me at a number to discuss an adjustment to the assessment.
I apologize. I wanted to mention just one thing from a procedural standpoint. So your, your, your options here with these objections are you would basically consider whether you would want to make modifications to the assessment role prior to adopting it, or you can choose to adopt the assessment role as presented with the modifications that we recommended. And then the appeal process would proceed according to the statute. So those are your options. You can either make adjustments or adopt as presented.
Okay.
So they can appeal after the adoption? Is that what, is that what you said?
So there's a, they're required to preserve their right to appeal. You're required to give a notice prior to or at the hearing.
Okay.
And then after that, there's a process, they have to, a legal process that's required to be followed in order to complete the objection process. And that process is laid out in the notice that was sent out to the property owners and published in the newspaper. So.
Okay. Thank you.
So can we welcome any public comment? Welcome. Yep, please go, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. I think I talked to Sue one day about it. Bruce Baker, the owner up on Arch Avenue, seven twenty-five. I noticed on the Arch Avenue one that Bluff Country Bus was not listed. They own a parcel right directly across from my building and adjacent to the vacant lot that I own. Should be like sixty-six foot, I believe. Both them lots across from my main building. They just built a new cold storage bus garage on that one parcel. I own the one next to it, the vacant lot. That's listed.
That bus, that bus building every morning.
Uh-huh.
I drive out of that bus building every morning.
Yeah, I see their assessment wasn't on here.
It's, it's on line one sixty-one. It just, the county does not list the street address for that parcel, so it's on the last page under, on designated, no designated parcel address, line one sixty-one, Drissom Enterprises.
Oh, okay. Up on Arch Avenue.
And then your second lot is right there, too, Bruce.
Okay, my second lot.
Yep.
Okay. My next question is, is like the curb or gutter along that street, you know, that's everything but my back building and what the gentleman on the corner, Moa, or whatever his name is, and the old Cry property. Them are the only two parcels that probably going to have a curb along it. What's the curb going to be like for the rest of the project? You know, everything else is businesses that where we drive in and out of. Is it going to be kept the same as it is now? Where are we going to have some kind of a cement?
So on Arch Avenue.
Yep.
No, where, if there's not concrete curb there now, there won't be new concrete curb. If there is supposed to be asphalt curb there, then we will put asphalt curb back. And I say supposed to in, in meaning that if it was there at one time, but got removed by the snowplow somehow, but.
Oh, it probably was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Because they're all gone now.
So we would put it back if it should be there based on drainage purposes. But if it's a driveway or something like that, we would not put it through a driveway.
Okay. Yeah, because they're all, everything upstairs drives through.
Yeah.
Except for where my one cold building, storage building is and, and one across from that. Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks for your questions.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the clarification. Brian, any, anybody else have a question or comment for the public hearing? All right, hearing none. We'll close the hearing at seven forty-nine. We'll close the hearing at 7:49. So if I understand, Brian, in terms of procedural options, we can adopt the, we can adopt the proposed street assessment as well as this assessment role with the corrections made, but for anyone who has made written notice, there's a process of appeal that goes beyond this decision.
Yeah, they would basically have to follow the process to file in district court.
Okay, right.
To complete the.
As outlined in the letter.
Yep.
Okay.
As far as, why don't we get it adopted and then we'll, we'll talk about payment?
Yep.
Perfect, just to clarify.
To clarify, that's good, yeah, sort of a public service announcement.
Yep.
Okay, so Chad's comment was, you know, we can address this with regards to, you know, whether someone would entertain a motion to adopt, to adopt the street plan in the, assessment role, but then we'll sort of discuss the payment so that the members of the public understand that process.
I'll make motion.
We have a motion to approve the street project as proposed, the bid award and the final assessment role.
One second.
We have a motion from Dean, a second from Craig.
Just a point of clarification with the adjustments from Brian.
With the adjustments from Brian that were, that were listed, some of which were made and called out and some of which are, I guess, let's see the.
There's only one that was made, the other three that weren't.
Right. I missed, I lost it.
3172, 152 and 150.
Correct.
The numbers. And it'll all be removal.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So Chad, what did you want to say about the payment so that?
Yeah, I just, I've had a few questions this week from people that received the letter. Really, so the clock, clock will start today and they will have 30 days to pay the assessment without any interest impact. So I didn't do the math before, but that's about on or around June 6th to make that payment. And that payment can be made here at City Hall for the amount of your assessment. And then after that time, interest will be accruing up until the time of assessment. And then they make that payment, help me, Sue, is that here?
To the Wabashaw County Auditor.
At the Wabashaw County Auditor. So if it's after the third, 30 days, all payments have to be made up at the county.
No, no.
No.
Here until we assess it with the county.
Okay, here until we assess it, so at the end of November.
Okay.
And we will calculate the interest up until that day when the payment's made. So clarify one final time, June 6th to make the payment in full, no interest impacts. After June 6th, interest will be accrued and can be paid up until the end of November here at City Hall at the amount plus the accrued interest. And then anytime after that, it has to go through the Wabashaw County Auditor's office or through your tax process as it's done, if it's escrowed or whatever, so.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Three point seven five.
Right.
And that's been consistent across all the projects, actually going back to the 2013 reconstruct.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Brian.
I think there was one, one other item that, well, actually a couple of other items on the project.
First item on the general.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna interject. Yep, so we have you again for the 2019 street utility improvement projects, just to discuss the bid results and give us an update on the contract award.
Yes, so normally, under normal circumstances, we would have a resolution for you to award the contract. So we took bids on April 17th at 2:00 PM. We actually got two bidders on the project, which was good, because we would normally only expect to get one bidder for an asphalt paving project in this, in this area. So we, two bids, the engineer's estimate was 1.46 million. The low bid from Rochester Sand and Gravel was 1.374 million. We also received a bid from A1 Excavating from Blumer, Wisconsin, 1.447 million. So as I said, normally we would recommend awarding the bid to Rochester Sand and Gravel for that amount. However, because this project also received local road improvement grant funding to supplement some of the costs of the project on 8th and Allegheny, as well as on 12th Street, on the west end of 12th Street, there's actually an agreement, besides the one that's in your packet with Wabashaw County, there will need to be an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation to facilitate those grant funds being sent to the city through Wabashaw County to fund the project. So there's a whole slew of agreements and that one came as a little bit of a surprise to us and we did not have time to get that ready. Mindot just sent us the notification of that last week. So what we will do is we'll be back in front of you at your June meeting with that agreement for your consideration and approval, along with a resolution to award the contract to Rochester Sand and Gravel if you choose to do so. This shouldn't be an issue from the standpoint of project schedule, because they are actually not planning to start construction on the project until the August timeframe, primarily because they are doing all the work on Highway 61 out here, as well as they have some other projects in the area as well. So knowing that they were a potential bidder or subcontractor with the paving, we set the contract up so they could do it at the end of the year to fit in with the rest of this work. Probably makes sense too, just to try to, well, either minimize the conflict between the contractors, or you could look at it as extending the pain of construction a little longer through the summer, so I apologize for that if that's how people look at it. But, so that's where we'll be at.
Look forward to further action.
Correct.
In June, okay. And then we have taken a look at approving a local road improvement program, LRIP agreement terms.
Yeah, so this one is just a cooperative agreement between the city and the county to just lay out the terms to facilitate the county serving as the fiscal agent for the funds that will come from Mindot to help finance the project.
And you, we can have action on that without the Mindot agreement in place?
You can, yep.
Okay. All right, so we can entertain a motion to approve the cooperative agreement, which is in our packet, between the city of Wabashaw and Wabashaw County whereby authorizing Wabashaw County to be the project sponsor and fiscal agent to administer LRIP funds for the project, SAP 079594001 and 002.
I'll move to approve.
The motion, we have a motion from Councilman Woodley, a second from Councilman Sola. Do we have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Very good, we'll look forward to more. Thank you, Brian. So next we have, yeah, thank you for those who spent the first part of the meeting with us. It's an awfully nice, I know, we're excited to hear from Gene, but it's an awfully nice night to spend it in council.
Trying to sneak out with them.
Right, right.
We never even had attendance at previous ones. Well, Gene?
Yes.
It's no secret.
What's that?
No, it's no secret.
Yeah. Nobody likes me.
I'm sure they're running back home to watch you on television. All right, we'll hear from Gene. He's gonna tell us about the ambulance, the Minnesota Department of Human Services supplemental payment program.
Okay, in your packets, you'll see there's a couple, there's a spreadsheet in there and then the cover sheet for the payment. And then there's like a little bulletin that describes what it is. What the Department of Human Services did was they went and got a federal grant, actually the state of Minnesota went and got a federal grant for, to help out with Medicare and Medicaid supplements for rural ambulance services. They started going back 2015, they've been doing it for two years now. This was brought to my attention at a conference that I was at. Filed all the paperwork, I worked with Sue very closely on going through things and making sure we had the right names and the right spots and stuff like that and filed this. And what it is, it's a volunteer program. What I'm asking for is approval to spend $3,391.98. And what it does from that, when we make that payment, we actually get back that amount of money and the rest of the supplement that's there. So in all actuality, you're paying yourself to get your money back, is what it is. It is extra cash, you know, for operations, you know, and stuff like that, because what's it, Medicaid and Medicare only cover up to, I think it's 40 or to 44% of the, the average cost for the run of an ambulance. So this, this does help out quite a bit, like I said, this goes back to 2000, I think this is a payment year of 2017. So they do this annually, so next March, April, right around in there, I'll start getting more information on this, of what our next payment will be for next year. So, and then what we'll actually get in return for next year, so.
So it's contact based, is that right?
Yes, it is contact based, yep. So I did run this through our billing company, Experti Billing, to make sure that all, everything that's on that spreadsheet is correct, because Medicare and Medicaid, if we have an overpayment, we are liable to give that back and actually pay that back. So I worked with Experti, Bill Shomer is his name with Experti, and verified everything on there, so that way we will not be caught trying to, or having to pay this back because of an overpayment.
Because of erroneous math.
Yes. So any questions?
So the way this sounds to me is that you pay 33,000, or 3,391.98 and then you're gonna get 67.8396 back?
Correct.
God, I love it.
Good return on investment.
You sure you're into that?
I wonder why the government is in debt.
Yeah, efficient process, right?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm really happy that they're giving something back.
Right.
So, because it's, it is very hard to deal with Medicare and Medicaid.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to.
A second.
Approve, super, we have a motion and a second to approve payment of non-federal share amount of 3,391.98 for the Wabashaw ambulance to receive the 2019 ambulance supplement payment of 67.8396 from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion passes, thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Is this, so it looks, just a question about, you expect this to be, is this something that this is a federal grant that they expect will be around for a little while?
Couple of years, they said, they didn't give it, there's no end date yet.
Okay. No sunset.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and we have Tony here, looking at, oop, I missed, I skipped one?
Joe, right.
Oh, yeah, we have Joe here talking about the approval of police truck purchase. I think I got my truck purchases or my equipment purchases mixed up. Welcome, Joe.
I can kick this off just very briefly, Joe, and that's just to give a history. Three years ago, we went to a three-year replacement plan, so this is the, the third year of that. So Joe's been out doing some work. We've had this in the capital improvement plan for three years. We're gonna actually reassess that going forward based on the wear and tear and expense that we have incurred on waiting three years versus should we wait two? But Joe's done the work to get us to where we are today. And like I said, again, this was in the capital improvement plan, so Joe, if you want to take it away.
Yeah, I think prior to that, we were, every other year, and we did try that out to, you know, see how it'd work. I think if you look back on bills, I think we're pushing them a little too far. So the first of the two items that was in the capital improvement plan was for the replacement of our squad. That squad that's being replaced is a 2013 with 155,000 miles, which is, I don't think we've ever gotten that many miles out of one, so these explorers have treated us pretty well. I did get a curveball thrown at me when going to replace that. The plan was to stick with the Explorer, but Ford was revamping that vehicle and so it's not available until next year. The reasons we have the Explorers, a big reason, the reliability is shown to be very good with them, but, you know, part of the, part of the deal with having those is to have a vehicle that can get you from point A to point B in any kind of weather, and those are all-wheel-drive vehicles. So without that option this year, I had checked into a few things and talking with my guys and thinking about some of the things we've run into, I thought that our best option was to look at the F-150 truck, just to have one in there. Good example, obviously with the Blizzard, it would have been a lot easier for us to get around with a, you know, that sort of vehicle. We have a lot of calls where we're picking up bikes or doing search warrants where we need the items to be stacked into a vehicle. Looking into that, I found that it was quite a, quite a savings to go that route. I think we ended up about $5,000 under budget by going the route of the F-150 as opposed to the Explorer. So state bid from that was through Midway Ford out of Roseville and total cost of the vehicle with everything needed would be $29,974.92.
So this came off the state contract?
Yep, yep.
It's used, right?
Hmm?
It's used?
Nope.
Not?
Nope.
For that price?
I wish I could get one for myself, yes.
It's four-wheel drive, right?
Yes, yep. The only thing on that sheet that I put in front of you where it had the potent options, I've gone back and forth, there was a $552 add-on to go with the Ego Boost. I'm thinking that I might stick with the straight V8 on that. I'm thinking, just looking at that, like for down the road, because this is a vehicle that we'll have for several years, it's going to be a little less in the pocketbook for maintenance and stuff when you're avoiding that. So I think that that would be the only thing that's on there that I would take off, so it'd be another 500 and whatever dollars of savings there. They only, all the equipment will be transferred over. I think the only thing that is additional is the cage, because you have to do a different cage with that. Lighting, I put in the packet that we are gonna transfer over and then, you know, once we have it to the guy that outfits it, we'll just have to see how it lights up safety-wise if we'd have to do any addition. There might be some additional things and I can't, you know, answer.
Can't know that.
Exactly what until it's there.
That out of the regular operating budget?
So I don't know if you want me to separate, because I have the other.
I would just talk about the other thing, so they can do two motions.
Yeah, you can discuss, yep.
Yep, so then the other is the purchase of two InSquad cameras. We are too short right now. These are the G-Tech cameras that we currently have purchased from previous capital improvement that are in two of our vehicles. Same cameras the county uses, they've been, they've been really good for us. Clarity, dealing with the company is very good, very easy to use, you know, you pull in our.
Are they on the dash and look out over the hood?
Huh?
Are they on the dash and look in front of the vehicle?
Yeah, yep, and then you can get inside and out, you know, for somebody in the back if, if you need that. And, you know, it's as easy as, I'm computer illiterate, but it's, it all dumps, when you pull into the, our lot there, it all dumps into that server, yes. And it's all, it's all available.
That was really bad job. Server.
I, I know how to click on it to see what I need to see, but yes, it's.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we were strongly encouraged by the judge?
Yeah, yeah. We had, we had old cameras, we were trying to keep them up and that has been a pretty common thing, questioning why that's not in those vehicles when.
The rest of your fleet has them.
Yep.
Trying to prosecute.
Okay.
Does this have an annual software upgrade fee you have to pay every year too, or, it looks like there's something, like you have one year of software maintenance enterprise account?
On the investment summary, the last item looks like it's, I don't know if it's renewable or not, to Jeff's question, Verito Software Maintenance and Enterprise Account, one year it states.
I mean, that's kind of trivial.
Presumably, you're already using these cameras, yeah, yeah, but good for us to know that.
More than likely that is the case, the way things are now.
Right.
You gotta do.
I imagine, I.
Just the equipment's licensed, yeah.
We'll confirm that, because we also are paying the county more for their software support in the last contract, so that might be under that.
It might be.
Yeah, I think it is, but we'll confirm that.
All right, we, any further questions? It's my understanding this is a standard in policing is to have your vehicles equipped with these cameras, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, we would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the 2019 F-150 truck with options. It's a total of $29,974.92 from Midway Ford Commercial. All right, we would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty-nineteen F-150 truck with options. It's a total of twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-four ninety-two for Midway Ford Commercial. We can make one motion, right? And the, and the purchase of two squad cameras for forty-one ninety-eight, forty-five per camera.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Dean Meyer. We have a second?
I'll, I'll go ahead.
We have a second from Craig Falkum. All, uh, any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Really work on that, Joe.
All right, we have removed this item, resolution for code violation.
That was eliminated? Yes.
So, now we have Tony, uh, looking at the purchase of a John Deere mower replacement she alluded to in his opening comments.
I'll just say again, this is a planned expenditure that Tony's been, has in the capital improvement plan for five-plus years now, so.
Yeah, we, um, talked about it at the park board, went through all the information that I provided them, uh, the hours on the current mower, mower, uh, the trade-in price that we are currently receiving. Um, we priced out a new, uh, model, pretty much exactly what we have. Um, we can't really step down from four-wheel drive because of some of the spots that we use it in. Um, we'd like to keep the cab on it for the air and the heat in the winter. Sometimes, uh, Norm or part-time mower is out in ninety degrees, and it might be dusty and dirty, you know, it's kinda nice to have that, um, amenity to the mower. Makes it usable pretty much year-round, um, and we get some more uses out of it being, that we have that as well. The sewer plant also had their own lawnmower out there, and, uh, they have some trouble with it over the last few years, and the transmission is, um, the input shaft actually broke off on it. And it's not worth, um, it's not worth fixing for what it's gonna, a cost to, to replace that. So, we, staff had got together, and we talked about sharing, um, this unit in the, in the winter, and changing around a few things we do, and it, it comes out that we can make it work, and then we asked them for a cost share, since they'll be saving, um, money on replacing their unit, um, out at the sewer plant. So, um, when it comes down to it, uh, we got twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-six for, um, our share from Public Works or Parks. If we were to purchase this, um, I'd take ten thousand dollars out of the park improvement line item in my budget, and then sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six would come from the capital improvement plan. Um, the reason I can take that out of my budget this year is our plans have kinda changed, and we are waiting to do some improvements in the parks until we get, um, an answer back from a grant that we applied for, and it's a pretty substantial grant. Basically, a lot of the money that we're looking for is all ADA improvements. So, we got a good feeling about the grant, um, Bolton and Mink helped us, helped us out with it, but unfortunately, we're not gonna hear back until late summer, early fall. Well, it's a little bit late to start planning some work, so I thought we could, um, instead of taking it out of the capital improvement plan, we could put it towards the mower, and then the same thing would be for the pool boiler as well, um, if that's passes. So, trying to minimize the, the hit to the capital improvement plan, um, kinda stay on course with replacing this mower. That's kind of, kind of our plan.
For the capital improvement plan, we did have it in there for thirty-one thousand, so this will obviously reappropriate dollars for future expenditures as well.
All right, any questions related to this proposal?
Yeah, so was, was there a competitive bid?
Was there?
Yeah.
Not with the state bid, you don't need to.
It's on the state bid?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
It's amazing all the stuff they have on that now.
It's-
Especially if you're new.
It's really hard to, John Deere's really got the market. If I went to Toro, usually Toro's double the price of a lot of our mowers. And it's, my, John Deere's worked really good for us, and they're local, you know, Plainview's not too far away, and, um, that's about all I can say. There's not a lot of mowers out there with the, the cab and the, something that's small, you know, that we can fit in the spots that we, we can, so.
Are you gonna put a snowblower on this, too?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, you want the cab for that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tony, how long do you think this will last, roughly?
I'd say, um, with the, with the current shape that the one we have in, another thirteen years, um, at least. That's kinda why I prorated it out for two thousand dollars a year, you know, to have a good mower. We have that mower, and we have the tool cat with the mower deck, and then we have a zero turn, and the zero turn was just purchased, I think, three or four years ago. So, we kinda just keep rotating.
Very good. Any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty, uh, purchase of the mower with twenty-nineteen, uh, capital improvement plan funds and a cost share as described.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Sala.
Second.
We have a second from Falkum. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Very good, thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
And we have another item from Tony, uh, the replacement of the pool boiler.
Seems like I'm up here a lot. But, right, that's what happens.
At least your items are together. Sometimes we've got you like popcorn.
Yeah.
You always want money.
Several, I know, and I hate it. I, I do, I hate it. Several different departments, I guess that's what I get. Um, so the pool boiler, thirteen years ago, I must've bought a new mower and a new boiler. Um, and I, did the pictures come through that I sent you?
Yep.
So, the inside is getting pretty well rotten from all the chemicals and, and everything that's went through that over the years. Um, when it was purchased, uh, a lot of the inner parts were stainless steel and, um, brass or bronze, which it's the best attempt to fight corrosion. So, um, there's nothing really else we can do. They're, they had a lifespan of ten years, we got thirteen. Um, granted, the last three years have been a nightmare, but, um, and the, with the timing on this, um, I had a, a long wait on bids, otherwise I would've been here two months ago. And so, we're gonna have to try and fix the old one temporarily to run for three weeks to a month, and then spend a day swapping it out if this goes through, so. Um, we've had it apart, you know, like I said, the last four or five years. A lot of leaks in it. We get the leaks resolved, um, silicone, patching, some hail marys. And, uh, we've got it going. Sometimes it breaks down halfway through the pool season. Um, we gotta call the maintenance, um, Harder's, or we tear it apart and try to get it done over a day or two period while the pool is not cooling down. And that's about it. If we were gonna do this, now, we did have a five-thousand-dollar, um, pool equipment, um, donation, so that helps to put towards this. And then, um, ten thousand out of the park improvement budget, and then the remaining would come out of the, um, capital improvement plan. And so, the, uh, let's see if I got this right here. Five thousand, ten thousand out of park, and then the, the leftover funds out of the CIP would be fourteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents. The two bids that we received were almost identical. I, um, the Harder's bid had tax on it, the Aqualogic did not. And so, by the time I added, um, tax onto Aqualogic, they were actually thirty thousand five fifty-five versus Harder's at twenty-nine thousand. And even if there was a difference where Aqualogic was a tad bit higher, I would still choose the, the local contractor, because when we call, he's there. And, um, we, we need that, so. I don't know if I can get, give you any more information, if I'm missing something?
I would guess, though, with, uh, without the guys we have, we'd have been doing this two to three years ago.
Yeah.
Um, I think last year I went over there hours before the pool opened, and that thing was in a million pieces on the ground, doing what they could, and even into the late night before the pool opened to get that thing running, so. Long time coming, and shows you what skilled labor on your workforce can do.
Yep. Very good.
That's it, I'll make a motion, too.
Very good. We have a motion to approve the boiler, uh, purchase. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I think I'm kinda left ear dominant. I, I, Tim, this time.
Do we need to specify the vendor that we wanna choose, or?
Clarification, Harder's.
Yeah.
Harder's.
Yeah, okay, so, purchase from Harder's, um, at twenty-nine thousand. We have a motion, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
No, other than thank the person who ever donated five thousand dollars.
Kidding, that's really timely. All right, super, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thanks, Tony. And we have Gene back to talk about the, uh, Assistant Ambulance Director hire and the interview process.
Yeah, so, last council meeting, um, I announced that Amanda was leaving us, the current Assistant Director. She was scheduled to leave on May twenty-first. Uh, she actually had moved that up due to her own, um, asking, and, uh, we, we granted that. So, um, she has now left us now and, and moved on, which we wish her great things, uh, but, uh, so we started the interview process. Uh, I assembled a hiring or, or interview committee, made up, make up of some commission members, some staff members, Monica Walters, Cindy Wabi. Tim was on the interviews, um, and, uh, did I forget anybody?
Brad Timish.
Oh, Brad Timish, yes, sorry.
John.
And, Ja-
John Free Meyer.
Couldn't make it, though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, John couldn't make it to him. So, we started that process, we started the interviews, we had four candidates. Uh, we narrowed it down the first, well, we had them over two nights, we, uh, it was a busy week for everybody in the city that week, so, um, but we narrowed it down to two candidates. Went through all of our notes and everything, and then we decided on, um, Ed Grainer, so you guys probably have his information in your packet. Uh, he, he's a citizen of Wabashaw, um, he's been on the service. I actually, uh, went through EMT class with him. Uh, him and I both went through, uh, the same class and graduated from it, and, uh, he, that was six years ago. Since then, he, uh, the previous director he worked under, um, at the ambulance, he was the field training officer. For a little while, he did quite a bit of, uh, the training and, and, uh, of new EMTs and, uh, day-to-day operations and stuff like that, so. What else? What's, what's this, with Ed? It's, it, you guys probably all know Ed Grainer, so, um, like I said, he's local, he's, he's in town, he's, he's gonna be a great asset to the service. He already has been a great asset. He's been, what's, sixteen years on the fire department? So, I think, I think that's what it is, sixteen, I think that's what it was, so, um, we moved it from the interview committee, we took it to the Personnel Committee, and, uh, presented to them what, what our option was, went through it. Uh, Emily was there, Chad, uh, John, John was there for that one, yep. I think the only one we were missing was Sue.
It was a couple of weeks.
He came in late.
Yes.
We'll give him, we'll give him credit for coming in, so.
Got there in a cut.
Spooked in and get the glory.
Right at the decision-making hour.
Presented the, presented our findings with the, uh, with the Personnel Committee, and we moved forward to, to offer, to send Ed out an offer letter. He has accepted for, uh, what you guys see in there, um, Class Seven, uh, was it Class Seven Step Seven? So, um-
Conditional offer based on approval tonight.
Um, yes, thank you, based on approval tonight, which, by the recommendations of the Personnel and the Interviewing Committee. Any questions or anything like that?
No, you've involved a lot of us in the decision. Thank you. It's been helpful.
Thank you for the whole process.
Great process.
I thank you guys for-
It was smooth.
Yep.
Being readily available and, and listening and, and-
And for those that weren't able to participate, multiple strong candidates, nice to have that.
Yep, multiple strong.
Multiple interviews.
Yep, so, the only, the problem was, was moving here.
Sure.
Relocation issues, yep.
Yep. So.
Great, very good. We could, uh, entertain a motion to approve the hire of Mr. Ed Grainer to the position of full-time exempt, uh, Associate Ambulance Director, uh, which is a job at Class Seven Step Seven.
I move.
We have a motion from, uh, Councilman Walrick.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Woodley. Any further, any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Very good, congratulations to Ed. I got to see him and say so in person, but he's passing on. Thank you. Uh, oh, sorry, we do have Tony back, uh, with, uh, uh, part-time seasonal hires for the twenty-nineteen summer season. Want to say anything about?
I can handle this one.
It's pretty straightforward, yeah. At peace.
This is per the budget, uh, we do this every year. We have two, what we call seasonal employees, which is right around six months, and this is to keep them from accruing, uh, para. Uh, and the other two are three-month positions geared at high school or college students. Um, like, happy to say we got three of our four back, well, three of our three, because we only had three last year. We couldn't find a second, uh, seasonal person due to the, and that's where we talked to the council about jumping that wage a little bit. So, um, from the public works side, we got Norm Tennis back for several years. This has been, uh, Norm's been a big asset. At twelve fifty an hour, Ryan Wolf, I believe, is his third year. Norm's on ten, so, uh, Ryan's back for his third year, Tanner's back for his third year, uh, at eleven dollars an hour, and, uh, we got a newcomer, Tim Hanson, uh, for twelve dollars an hour. And then in addition, uh, the pool lifeguards, and this was led by Kelly, uh, Kelly Quaid, the pool director. She can do that out at the school, do some recruiting of students. But we have Aiden Baxter, Ellie Scholling, Grace Scholling, Clayton Hawkins, Lex, Lexie Johnson, Luke Bergen, Max Bergen, Tariq Busardan, uh, Lido Edelbach, Ben Solberg, Claire Gussi, Kylie Passy, Madeline Meyer, uh, Kada Malakowski, Maya Freeze, Rachel Gussi, Taylor Sue Rebel, Hannah Grimm, Ashley Haxton, Kiana Kruger, and Abby Moyer. And the new lifeguards start at ten dollars an hour, um, and WSI-certified, start at eleven dollars an hour with a twenty-five percent increase for each year they return.
Twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cent, what'd I say, dollar?
Twenty-five percent.
Oh, percent.
No, that's retention. That's retention strategy.
So.
They'll never go to college. Very good, we could, thank you for those, um, the work that goes into that from Kelly and, and others. Um, we could entertain a motion to approve those twenty-nineteen seasonal and part-time hires as presented by Chad.
I move.
A motion by Tim Walrick.
Second.
Second by Craig Falkum. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Summer is officially here, I think.
See that tomorrow.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
And now a resolution to accept the donations. We postponed some of these from our, our April meeting. So, we would, uh, after hearing these, we would entertain a motion to accept these very generous donations. And for the Christmas Decoration Fund, we have a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation from Exhale Energy to the library. Uh, forty dollars in memory of Joel Yarmalik by Dave Kennebeck, uh, thirty dollars in memory of George Hansen by his friends and family. Uh, in memory of Olive Kens, twenty dollars by Dave and Jeanne Woodley, twenty-five dollars for her past service on the library board. Also to the library in more, memory of Doris Warnkin, twenty-five dollars by Matthew and Leanne Marks, twenty dollars from Gary and Deb Glomsky. Uh, additionally, twenty dollars from the, from the following, Judy, I think it's Knos, Jean Woodley, Bob and Bonnie Zymitz. And also to the library in memory of Eleanor Considine, twenty-five dollars by Mary Funk, twenty dollars both from Don Yarmalik and Dave Kennebeck. A hundred and twenty-five dollars to the library by Carol Scott, eighteen dollars is a birthday donation by Millie Anderson. Uh, a hundred dollars by Jean Johnstad, a thousand dollars for the children's library entrance mural by Friends of the Library. For Veterans Park, five hundred dollars and ninety-five cents is, um, toward the life-size Kneeling Soldier statue, which we placed there by S.F.J. Creative Designs. SBJ, excuse me. Uh, fifty dollars, uh, toward the dog kennel donation, uh, Peter and Therese Walrick. So, uh, we would entertain a motion to accept these very generous donations.
I'll move.
Thank you, we have a motion from Walrick.
I'll second.
Second from, uh, Dean Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, we really appreciate that support, that's marvelous, as well as the five-thousand-dollar donation to the pool, uh, which is just very generous. All right. Uh, and we have received our financials. You got those?
Yep.
Okay. Any announcements before we adjourn? Lots going on. We'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
We have a motion from Walrick, we have a second from Woodley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for those of you who stayed with us, appreciate it.